Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rosen?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. We'll have invocation by Assistant City Manager Les Jones and the Pledge of Allegiance
Mayor, who's this? The council members. My name is David Ville. I live at 2242 Dalley Lane. My house is right on the border. Part of my house is in Garden Grove, part of it is in Anaheim. And I'm here actually to respond to what Mr. Rosen was said regarding where I lived. And I want to express here that I am not representing AARP today. I'm representing myself. I'm here as a citizen, which I have every right to be here. And I'm here basically because I want to say that I've probably spent more hours and probably paid more taxes in Garden Grove than Mr. Rosen has. As a matter of fact, when I came here in '57, Mr. Rosen was probably in San Francisco or somewhere in the ceiling diapers. So, as a citizen and as a person that has put in many, many hours in working with the youth groups here in Garden Grove in teaching first aid, teaching water safety, and also as a coach and a teacher, I want to mention that I came here today to tell you that my children went from kindergarten through high school here in Garden Grove. They graduated and they went to UCLA and the University of Oregon and graduated. Now, I have to really challenge Mr. Rosen on this because this really bothers me because I have always would try to say nice things about Mr. Rosen to our group. I have never would try to run him down anyway. But for him to try to make me a second-class citizen here in Garden Grove where I have put so much time and so much effort in trying to help people and our youth groups, I feel that I had to come here and try to show that I do have some proof that I want the people on TV because this has brought to my attention. I came here with my jacket because this is the only time it's ever happened in Garden Grove. I was the coach of the fifth and sixth grade kids over at Simmons Elementary School. We won the championship not only in football and in basketball, but we did it not only in the city of Garden Grove twice, but also in all of Orange County. We beat all of, in Orange County, we were the champs. We put Garden Grove on the map. And I brought this plaque that was awarded to me right here at the City Council by Bernard Adams, who was the, at that time, the mayor. He awarded me this plaque and it has on here the countless hours that I have put in working here in Garden Grove. And to back that up, I even dug this up. This is a picture with me in it. Of course, I don't look like that anymore because that was quite about 35 years ago, but these are the kids. And right there, well, you'll see the plaque that was awarded by Garden Grove for football and basketball. And over here, you'll see the big golden football that was awarded by Orange County. And this is the first time and the last time it has never been, this feat has never been accomplished since then. And I want to tell you that when I get criticized, and I don't know if you're trying to intimidate me, but it seems as though you were, and this is why I am fighting back and this is why I am coming back. Because when I try to help people and then you have someone up there that's kind of acting like a bully, I got to come back. And when you tell me that I can't respond and you say something to me, and then I just don't think it's fair. And this is why I come back because I don't, I fight back. And I try to help people when I feel that bullies are picking on them. And so I want to thank you very much for, oh, by the way, not only have I spent a lot of time living here in Garden Grove and working for Garden Grove, but my wife is also a school psychologist for 30 years in the school district. So, we have put, you know, as a family, we have put in our time in trying to do good things for Garden Grove, and I'm still going to keep on trying to do good things for Garden Grove. I'm still going to be working for my seniors here. And you mentioned that I don't represent you, that you also belong to AARP, but you do not belong to our chapter. Of course, I don't represent you. And the thing is, we wish that you would come to what some of our chapter means because we would like to talk to you. We would like to get your opinions on some of these things. Now, with some of the other council members, they have met with us. You met with three of us one time. And let's face it, it was a short meeting and at that time, you acted like you were on our side. As a matter of fact, you told us that fireworks were something that needed, something needed to be done and that, but that you only had one vote. You were only one vote and that the rest of the people would not back you up, that you were alone. So, and this is why we try to talk to everybody and we try to get their opinions. And it would be really nice if you or this council would actually have all of the citizens, I mean, and talk about this issue and try to get some consensus on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes? Wait a second. Just one. I just want to thank Dave for shaving about six years off my edge.
Did I respond?
No, that's why. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Charles Mitchell and I am currently the Chairman of the Sanitary Advisory Commission for Garden Grove. I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And it strikes me that we live in a very small world indeed. The reason I bring this up is because of an event that occurred last week. It was a special event for the Chamber of Commerce and a grand opening. I won't mention the name of the establishment because that wouldn't be fair to all of the other members of the Chamber of Commerce who have had their grand openings. But this was really a special event. We had probably 150 or more people there. And it is interesting that there are so many things that occur at these Chamber of Commerce mixers. And people get a chance to meet other people, learn other people's businesses, what they're doing, how they're going about it. And there are so many things that occur from these meetings. My wife, for instance, went to Nifty Fifty after I attended one of the grand openings for one of their facilities. She's now a very happy member of that. But these things keep going on and I encourage businesses in the city of Garden Grove to come forward and join the Chamber of Commerce. It can do great things for your business and I think you can do great things for other businesses as well. Now, the second thing I'd like to talk about is a notice that I received in the mail. Now, this notice is from the Orange County Sanitary District. And it's about a public hearing on February 27th at 6:00, the Orange County Sanitary District Headquarters on Ellis in Fountain Valley. Now, the reason for this public hearing is they are going to be raising sewer rates by about 10%. Now, most people don't realize how they're paying sewer fees for the county. We have our own fees within the city. There was a big issue some time back about the fact that it was tied into our water usage and the rates went up for the Garden Grove City Sanitary District. However, what happens is your tax bill comes to you twice a year. If you look at all the fees that are attached to that tax bill, you'll find that the Orange County Sanitary District charges are on there. Now, ours is going from $182 to $201. So, look carefully at that and if you're interested in finding out more about this increase in rates and if you want to say something about it, that will be your opportunity on February 27th at the Orange County Sanitary District Public Hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. You can have five minutes each or combine it and whatever.
Just need a couple of minutes. Good evening, council members. We are here to express our support for the dog park that has been proposed. I came to a council meeting last year sometime and I asked, or I proposed it anyway, and I just think that Garden Grove wanting to be the forward-looking, future, futuristic-type city should have a dog park. I mean, there's other cities nearby that have them and multiple cities that have them. And it's just unfortunate we don't have one. I mean, we have to take our, you know, we live in a society today where yards aren't, yards are nonexistent in some cases. So, to get your dog exercise, you basically turn to the streets or to parks and schools. And unfortunately, schools don't allow dogs and parks are, you're unable to let your dog run. And frankly, I can't run even a third as fast as my dog. My dog's fast. And in order to get her exercise, I literally have to take my life into my own hands and take her on my bike. I mean, short of hanging the leash outside my car window, that's the only way to get her to run. And so, anyway, it's just, I know there's a lot of people in the same boat and I'd like to see this proposed dog park come to fruition. And I'm sure that it'll be supported by, you know, with more press, it'll have great support in the city.
I actually just want to bring up the fact that when I walk the dog, I walk her around here quite a bit. And the only time I feel safe is when I'm around the police department or the fire department. And I believe if we had a dog park, I would feel more safe in there because I know there'd be other people in there with dogs and that'd be the purpose of being in there instead of having to sneak into a school and walk your dog. So, that's my two cents.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Very much, council members.
Well, I'm here without notes tonight. I'm Verla Lambert. I live on Marble Place here in Garden Grove. And I'm here, of course, to talk about the lighting on Garden Grove Boulevard. Several of the people in our neighborhood, our residents, have called Edison about the lights in our medium between Harbor and Palm Street. Well, my son broke down and let me have the car the other evening and I was out on the road by myself in the dark. And I happened to come from Beach. And so, I had Leo take me back the next evening and we counted, he drove, I counted, 23 poles without lights and three singles out. So, that means that there's 49 lights out on Garden Grove Boulevard in the medium. I didn't bother with Harbor Boulevard, Lamson or Chapman. I just went down Garden Grove Boulevard. So, what we need now is a voice of authority to talk to Edison and get these lights working in Garden Grove. And we were hit by taggers again, oh, just a few, I guess it was last week. But they didn't hit our wall where our garden is growing, but they hit the side of the wall where I don't have a garden. So, that also proves that if we can have these community gardens and greenery in front of our walls, we won't have the taggers as much. But we need to have these lights on, especially with the, like even in my neighborhood, if these lights aren't on, people could be drug around the corner of this wall and nobody would know it. And so, we need to have some lights unless somebody screams loud enough, I guess we'd hear them, but, you know. And, you know, we're just here and of course, we all know we lost Ray this last week. But, you know, let there be light. Ray would want us to go on with business as usual. So, I'm here speaking my piece again. But let's please, please, somebody with authority, get a hold of Edison and get us some lights. Thank you.
Can I keep this?
Yes, you can keep that one.
Do you have a copy? Okay, here.
I have my copy here, so I know.
Maybe Keith, Jones or someone can look into it and report back to us. Thank you, Verla.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff. Name's Russ McDonald. Lived here in Garden Grove for 25-plus years and a county of 50-plus. I'm here tonight to talk about fireworks as usual. I was over here for something the other day, oh, the senior center. And I come across this beautiful put-together pamphlet here and it's got about the senior center and it's got all the mayor and the city council, then it's got the mission. The mission of the city of Garden Grove is to provide responsible leadership, quality services as we promote safety. That's stuck in my throat, safety. And you all just keep on letting the fireworks continue on continuously. Two years ago, a couple houses burnt down. Last year, a house burnt down. And you guys just continue on. I don't know what it's going to take, maybe a loss of life or something, for you guys to think, really think about safety for the city? I don't know what it's going to take. I brought this for Mr. Rosen. It's a flip-flop. And Mr. Rosen, you have flip-flopped so many times on a fireworks issue. I'd like to present this to you. This is the golden flip-flop for you. Sincerely hope someday you'll take a stance and be on our side, really. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Sorry, Mark Dibbs or Dilloz? I'm not sure. Pardon me for butchering your name.
Mayor Dalton, council members, members of the public, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nick Dibbs.
Well, we were close.
But I'm sorry for my printing on that. I'd like to first off pay a tribute to former Councilman Ray Luttrell, who was a good friend of mine for many years and a mentor. He faithfully served the citizens of this city and community as a council member from December of 1982 until November of 1990. As someone once wrote, "The mark of a true leader is someone who is honest, has integrity, dependability, professionalism, and a strong spiritual foundation that is dedicated to truth and justice." And our great nation and the world just completed celebrating the life of Martin Luther King. And I can think of no better tribute to Ray Luttrell than to comment that I feel that he served this community like Martin Luther King would have if he had been here. One of the things that Ray was really concerned about for our city is redevelopment and the money that is siphoned off through redevelopment away from the taxpayers into the redevelopment agency. And back on December 27th of '04, Ray mentioned to me, he said, "In 1973, the city of Garden Grove received property tax revenue of approximately $4 million." And at that time, there was no redevelopment at that year. We jumped from 1973 to 2004, the property tax revenue for the city of Garden Grove was approximately $6 million. But the revenue because of the tax increment that is siphoned off from taxpayers into the redevelopment agency was $20 million. That was three years ago. And so, we have a boondoggle for the taxpayers and the citizens of the city and the community and the county. And of course, Supervisor Chris Norby wrote a famous pamphlet called Redevelopment: The Unknown Government. And the website is www.redevelopment.com. And I have, was not able to obtain five copies of that brochure, but I have provided you with photocopies of the first two pages for your review. And I hope you'll take the time to go to the website and read this booklet and listen to what Supervisor Chris Norby has said about redevelopment. And the fact is, you can spin the numbers any way you want, but the bottom line is is that the tax increment increase, as Councilman Luttrell eloquently pointed out many times before this council and to the community, is that the scheme, is that the property tax increase due to redevelopment stays only within the redevelopment agency. And because this is a boondoggle that's created by the state government, I would like to ask the council to draft, send a letter to the Assembly asking them to revise redevelopment so that this money doesn't have to continue to be siphoned off and that our city and our police and fire can continue, can benefit from the increase in the tax increment rather than the tax increment staying within only the redevelopment agency. So, I'd like to ask the city, the council members to give some, read the pamphlet, go to the website, talk to Supervisor Norby and others who recognize what the problem is. And that's the first step is recognizing that there is a problem. I do want to mention that the funeral for Ray Luttrell, Councilman, former Councilman Ray Luttrell will be tomorrow at 2:30 PM at West Minister Memorial Park. I want to thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, my phone number and email is attached to the brochure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I have a dream. I have a dream that one day, my dog will be able to walk free. Will be able to drink water with black dogs and white dogs and brown dogs and red dogs. Little dogs and big dogs. I don't care where it is, I just, my dog was born to be free. I live in a townhome complex where my dog is not allowed to run free. However, of course, you know me to buck the system and I often do and people often ask, "Why don't you put your dog on a leash?" So, this would solve a lot of problems where I live. My dog loves to play with other dogs. I have no children of my own. My dog is my child. And I did vote for the increase in the recreation tax for the parks, even though I didn't have children. I do believe that we should have parks for people who have kids and parks for people who have dogs. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lucas.
Good evening, this is Mayor and City Council. I'm here to speak on the dog parks issue. And the location at Brookers and Bixby, the number quoted there is for construction of parks roughly ninety thousand dollars, but that's without any of the cleanup of the arsenic that's in the soil. And wanted you to consider that, because if you have people walking out there with their dogs, you know, the humans and the dogs both get exposed to the arsenic. And in addition to that, there are several locations suitable for dog parks that staff has looked over. And the location at Brookers and Bixby is really the only really main suitable spot for a skate park, which, you know, I worked with Councilwoman Deana Wynn on finding that location. And by removing that option and using that only as a dog park, we're kind of left without any other locations for a skate park, when we do have three or four other options for dog parks. So I'd like for you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close oral communications, and we'll go to the agency. Okay, at this time, we'll open up the regular agency for the City of Garden Grove. Just show everybody present. And we go directly, we've had oral communications, so we'll go to consent items. There's only the minutes, and we'd like to make a motion.
Move, Paul.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, we have no items for consideration, we have any matters from agency members or director. Hearing none. We will actually, at the end of this meeting, go into closed session on two parcels on Factory Drive that we're considering procuring. And we will bring that back. At this time, we'll close the meeting. Can I reconvene the sanitary district? Let the record show that all members are present. Okay, consent items.
Mr. President, it's recommended that items two A through two E be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a board member.
I'll move. Want to pull any? Okay.
I'll move all of them.
Okay, a motion?
Two A through two E.
Second. A motion, a second. Call for a vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, public hearings, three A.
Yes, Mr. President, you have a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance establishing policies and procedures for inspection, repair, and replacement of private sewer laterals. And I'd like Keith Jones to make the presentation for you.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. President, members of the board, tonight before you, you have one of the elements still remaining in order to comply with our two thousand and six, January two thousand and six, Orange County Coast Keeper settlement agreement. The agreement called for certain terms and conditions. One of those is, the Garden Grove shall require closed-circuit television inspections of private laterals whenever Garden Grove finds that a sewage overflow emanating from a private lateral line has reached public property or onto the private property of a third party. Also, Garden Grove shall require private property owners to replace lines found to have any of the following uncorrectable conditions: SAGs, roots, intrusion, substantial deterioration of lines, or other conditions which present the likelihood of continued sanitary sewer overflows, but they cannot be corrected through the means other than replacement. Now, these are terms and conditions, again, set by the Orange County Coast Keepers in our settlement agreement. And staff is now bringing this forward for your consideration. The policies and procedures are essential to avoid future legal action from the Orange County Coast Keepers. They realize as well as we do that since the leading cause for sewage overflows is related to damaged private sewer laterals, the district should have legal authority through a sewer lateral ordinance that legally binds procedures for the inspection, repair, and or replacement of private sewer laterals to prevent future potential blockages in the sewer collection system. So what this means is, when we're notified or observed that there's a sanitary sewer overflow occurring on a private property that has spilled either into the public property, such as the street, or onto a third party's private property, as into a parking lot, that it will require the property owner to assume full responsibility and cost for a closed-circuit television inspection, which will then be produced to the Garden Grove Sanitary District and reviewed by Public Works. And if it is determined that the cause of the sewer spill requires a repair, that will be conditioned for that property owner to do that. If it requires that, or that there is or no repair to, that would correct the situation, then a replacement of that line would be required. One of the things that we're naturally concerned of, of course, is the cost for the property owner to perform such repairs or replacement. And one of the things we're going to recommend that be amended in the ordinance tonight occurs on page three. Six lines down, first paragraph, it says, "The property owner, other responsible person, and/or contractor performing the repair or replacement work shall obtain all necessary permits. Realizing that a plumbing contractor can do these repairs also, we would insert that the property owner, other responsible person, and/or contractor," in the new language it would read "or plumbing contractor," "performing the repairs or replacements shall obtain all the necessary permits." What we feel that would do is, instead of hiring a large construction company to work in the public right-of-way out in the street, this would allow a plumbing contractor to do that same work and follow the same procedures, obtaining the permits, but would also reduce the cost to the property owner. The diagram on your screen there is for the benefit of depicting just what we're talking about as far as a sewer lateral. And we used the Uniform Plumbing Code as the definition of, their definition for describing the sewer lateral contained in our ordinance. The diagram shows the sewer main, which is to the left of the diagram at the bottom where it says "public sewer." This is the main that is used by all, or maintained by the Garden Grove Sanitary District. This is where the affluent from adjacent properties flows into, and it provides a benefit for the entire Garden Grove Sanitary District. Therefore, it is only proper that the Garden Grove Sanitary District maintain this. The private sewer lateral benefits the property owner only. If that house wasn't there, there'd be no need for a private sewer lateral, and therefore it would not in any way affect the sewer main or the benefit to the rest of the community. So the proposal under the Uniform Plumbing Code is that the private sewer lateral runs from their connection at the public sewer to within two feet of the house. And the remaining sewer that runs from the house to that adjacent point that's two feet from the house, that is also the property owner's responsibility, but that is referred to as a building drain. What we're proposing then tonight is that the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board hold a public hearing to receive testimony and receive written protests from property owners, and consider adoption of the attached private sewer lateral ordinance with the recommended amendment that I had alluded to earlier. This completes staff report. We have to answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Is this legally required, other than as part of the Coast Keeper settlement? If we did not pass this, aside from the settlement, are there any regional water quality control board problems?
If we continue to have sewer spills as a result, there would be, yes.
What are our options? If somebody has a lateral that is leaking sewage, what are our options short of this?
Leaking sewage above ground?
As I read this, is any leaking sewage either below ground or at ground level?
A good question maybe would be, what have we done in the past? We certainly have not allowed people to have leaking laterals in the past. How do we handle it in the past?
In the past, when we've noticed that there's been a sewer spill, and it's on private property, we have enforced that through help of the attorney's office and providing the property owner with the notice that they need to correct the situation.
It would constitute a nuisance, and that can be abated by the city.
Have you gone to court on any of these issues, on any of these laterals before?
To my knowledge, we haven't been required to. We have gotten compliance without having to go to court.
Okay. And in compliance, if a homeowner has leaking sewage and we go to court to abate the nuisance, what would they be doing differently than what this ordinance calls for?
In all likelihood, it would, the end result would be much the same. However, as part of our commitment with the Coast Keepers, these specific requirements will set forth.
Putting aside the Coast Keepers.
But I do believe that the end result would be the same on a nuisance abatement. And I also believe that we could get there in the same result through some of the regulations that are applicable from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, because property owners are required under those regulations as well to maintain their facilities and not allow sanitary sewer overflows.
And what about the provisions for mandatory CCTV inspection?
I'm not aware.
Is that something new?
I'm not aware of the regional board having those requirements in place. However, over the past ten years, it has become the most common way to identify problems in sewer systems, and it is utilized by almost all agencies at this point.
Well, now, this has it at the property owner's expense, to conduct an inspection using CCTV. What does that cost, you know?
Yes, that would cost two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, it's cheap.
Yes.
Relatively cheap. Okay. And then to fix the lateral, it's just whatever it costs to fix the lateral?
Oh, is it per foot?
Yes, the cost of replacing a lateral, if it's replaced, would be approximately a hundred dollars per lineal foot.
Is that contractor or plumber?
Go ahead, Ms. Verla.
If we charge somebody two hundred and fifty dollars, or we tell them they have to get an inspection with a television camera, and they go through it and they come back and say, "Here's the tape, guys, I got a clean bill of health." Who picks up the two hundred and fifty dollars then?
I wouldn't anticipate that that would be a problem, but if that particular case came...
Why would you not anticipate that being a problem?
Because there wouldn't have been a spill if there wasn't a problem.
Let me ask a question, then. Go ahead, if you're not finished. Well, if you're saying that it's, if the lateral needed to be replaced because there's leakage that's visible, or somehow you can determine that, why would you even need CCTV? If it's leaking, why don't you just replace it? Isn't that an additional cost that may not even be necessary?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, the benefits of having a CCTV is it actually identifies, you know, a specific location of where the problem occurs, so you're not digging up the entire property trying to identify the problem. It's a definite benefit to be able to replace, you know, say it's only three feet long, you wouldn't want to be digging up a forty-foot trench if you can isolate the location.
So in other words, what you're saying is it may not be the whole, whatever the length of it is, a hundred feet, two hundred feet, it may not. You might be able to get by relatively cheap with a smaller section.
Mr. President, I think in all probability, that would be the case in, you know, almost all the time.
You know, it seems to me in the past, when we talked about it, we were talking eight to ten thousand dollars for laterals. I remember hearing those figures a couple of years ago.
At least seven thousand, you're right there, about three.
Probably if you had to go all the way under the street, is probably a big distinction of...
Well, this would be to the center of the street or whatever, it would be past the property line. Don't we also have provisions in the event that there's some city liability, as far as trees or something, that, you know, I'm not sure what else, I guess perhaps, I know we had some problems when we were working on one of the wells, and, you know, things cracked and broke and all that. But I believe in the past, one of the things, because I was kind of concerned about the cost thing too, but somebody said, "Well, we do factor in the city in the event it's roots from a city tree that has damaged that." And it would not be a hundred percent, maybe not even any of the liability on the part of the homeowner.
Mr. President, that's correct. Usually, well, currently, if we identify that a city tree is causing damage to the sewer, and it's, it can be attributed to that city tree, the practice has been, the tree is removed and the sewer is repaired, and it's either recovered, if the sewer is on private property, we don't have our crews work on that for liabilities reasons. But if it's out in the street, we may enter into, on a case-by-case basis, we may do the repairs. But the property owner would be able to seek a, to seek, being refunded his, whatever he was out for the repairs through the city's claim process.
Yeah, but couldn't, I mean, if there's a tree, the roots go onto private property and cause that damage? And then you're saying that, well, since it's private property, we don't touch it, even though it may be caused by a city tree?
Still a claim.
It's handled through a claim if the damages, say, closer to the house on their private property. We usually have them perform the work through a contractor, because it removes the issue of, if city crews go on private property and cause further damage, we're opening ourselves up to further and potential liability and further claims. So we'd rather have a private contractor assume that responsibility and liability, correct the problem, and then we reimburse the homeowner through that process.
So this might be a situation where the CCTV would discover that?
Yes.
And would be able to identify where the problem is on the property and who's liable for it?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go back to the laterals. Basically, you're saying that in most instances, a repair job is just a repair job, it's not a total replacement of the lateral?
That's correct.
And what would you say that percentage is, ninety percent, eighty percent?
I couldn't say, but the majority of the problems we have right now with private spills has to do with grease, blockages from grease rags. We've had maybe a half dozen in the last seven years that had to do, I think one was a SAG in the line where the line had to be replaced, but that's not been the norm.
So a rotor ruder would take care of that in some instances?
That's correct.
And how do we know it's our tree? What do we do, do DNA on it or something?
In some instances, that's the only tree in the locale.
Count the rings, cut it and count the rings. And the root's going to count the rings, right? Any other questions from staff?
Yes. So, thank you, Mayor. So in the past, when we tried to resolve this, it would be an abatement of the nuisance? And that would be a civil action?
Generally.
Generally. Have we ever gone to criminal liability in the past?
Not that I'm aware of. Perhaps staff might have a longer memory on that.
Now, the new ordinance, would that expose the homeowners to criminal liability?
No, this is a civil.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me take that back. It's a civil directive. It is possible that if somebody violates the code and doesn't comply, that they could then put themselves in violation of the code, which would be a misdemeanor violation. So it is possible that it could get there, but that's not the forum that we're looking at in proceeding forward. We're simply looking at a civil remedy to make the appropriate correction.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yes. Will we be using the criminal liability aspect to pressure resolution of the problem?
We never threaten criminal action to... We never threaten criminal action to achieve a civil result, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that in just a minute. I mean, we have in the past on code enforcement, pushed it all the way into the court, where a judge threatened somebody with that misdemeanor if they didn't comply. So it's usually a judge that does that, it's not the city doing that, because we've had, we've taken them into court and then we had to take them back into court and that type of thing, and then a judge threatens them. And so that's not really us doing that. At that point, it becomes a, they're not complying, the courts tell them to comply.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Wait a minute, Charles, Peggy's coming up first. Ladies first, Charles.
My main concern on the possibility of somebody having to repair or replace the entire line going from their home to the street is that some of our residences in Garden Grove have been here for many, many years. And the diagram that was shown is of the more recent housing tracks where your house is probably no more than 40 or 45 feet from the street. But some of the older residences have very large lots, so that means that their lateral is going to run for quite some distance and the cost of that replacement is going to be considerable. So I wonder if there's going to be any consideration of how long the lateral is based on how large the lot is, rather than going on just a, a straight average of the more recent homes built in the 1950s.
Thank you. Well, it sounded like what we heard prior to that was that if, if it's a section, it needs to be replaced, that's what's replaced as opposed to the whole lateral. And if the whole lateral were bad, you know, if you're fortunate enough to have a large lot, you know, that's, that's just the way it, it is. I mean, someone might pay for a, a small section to be replaced and someone else might pay for a larger one, depending. Yeah, Peggy, go ahead.
Basically, I don't have a huge front yard, thank God. But basically speaking, when I went to install a new driveway, probably 20 years ago, the first seven feet had to be inspected because I was told it was city property. And it, they had to see, make sure the slant was all right and the cement was a certain thickness and all of that stuff. Well, now, you're telling us that now wherever the city, the sewer comes into the middle of our cul-de-sac. So from that point where it joins the sewer, all the way to wherever it picks up sewage in my house, all of that are my laterals. As opposed to from the, the center, seven feet back on my property, then why did I have to have someone come out and inspect my driveway if that's my personal property?
That's probably an easement issue. You have the same thing, some residential areas don't have sidewalks, but yet there is an easement for the sidewalk and the city actually could put sidewalks in.
Right, the right-of-way. The right-of-way extends beyond the curb line, usually five, seven feet beyond the curb line is still the city right-of-way, so that area was still-
But if the city hasn't spoken what they do with my property, then why aren't they responsible for the sewer? That public trucks and other people, I'm not the only one that drives between my house and the center of my street. So we have big trucks, little trucks, lots of traffic, and now my street doesn't get a lot because I'm a cul-de-sac. But over the space of our, because our streets now are over 50 years and plus, that means a lot of cars have driven by that and therefore jiggled my sewer line, and I'd be responsible for other people's traffic, damaging ultimately? That's my question, is why all of a sudden are we responsible all the way to the middle of the city as opposed, street, as opposed to from where it joins our property line?
I'd like to comment on that. When, when we take a street and close it up, in other words, we're not going to use the street anymore, the property, I know they've got the property line written there right at the sidewalk on, on that drawing they had, but your ownership goes right out to the middle of that street. And if we were, if we were to do away with that street, you would get paid that property, or we, let's say we took it away, if something else, we did something with that street, which we have on occasion, the owner, the homeowner gets paid for that property right out to the middle of the street.
But if I sell it, I can't sell it, or I can't put a red line on my-
Because the city's got the right-of-way on it.
My curb.
The city's got control of it, but you got the ownership of it.
And then how much back from where the sewer line, the city's sewer line, the one that we're paying to repair for the next 10 years? How much, how far does actually a join go? Does it mean where these two pipes match? That's where-
Where it hooks up-
Because if, how far back is that?
Where it hooks up to the central sewer going down the middle of the street, it goes, the, the lateral goes all the way from your house to there.
Yes.
I have a big front yard, and I was just thinking about, man, if that happens to me, it's going to be a disaster. But it's going to be a disaster anyway, because from a sidewalk to the center of the street is a short period, a short amount of space to, considering from the sidewalk to the middle of my house, in fact, to the back of my house where the first sewer ties into the back bathroom, so it could be a major problem.
So I've unknowingly known, for the last 30, God knows years, almost 30 years, lived not knowing that if that sewer backs up in the middle of my street, I could be liable for tearing up the street and fixing where my sewer joins in?
I think we need to look at these as case-by-case, there's so many hypotheticals. If there was, if it was determined that something else caused that, we could, you know, factor that in as to who takes liability for it, but we can't anticipate all the hypotheticals.
Let's ask another question of staff while she's here. How many of these have we had in the last 10 or 15 years? Five or six?
Well, an example that she described, none.
Yeah, you're right.
So, you know, the hypotheticals, but we don't get many of these.
Maybe, I mean, we have sewer spills, but they're mainly from commercial properties, multifamily.
I was just curious.
And the majority, again, of the time, it's from grease blockage. And so our, our Environmental Services and Compliance Division, they're the ones that respond to that, investigate it, and arrive at what's causing the problem. And again, the majority of the time, it's grease. And you fix the blockage and things are fine, and then you educate the, either the restaurant or the multifamily home, or apartment complex, as to don't pour grease down the drain, things are fine after that.
Thank you. Can anyone else like to speak on this issue? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Is this, is this ordinance adopting for both commercial and residential?
Yes. It's for all private property.
You know, as you drive past Calvary Chapel and that wedding chapel out on Knott Street, you will get a sewer smell. I mean, it's there constantly. And I think what creates it is that Harry's Restaurant on the corner of Knott Street, now, Harry's Restaurant doesn't do that on purpose. And whoever, whoever built that, gentlemen, why don't you listen to me for a minute, because I'm really directing this right at you guys. Whoever built that, instead of going out in the center and tying it into the sewer system right there at the corner, they would have had, had to tie it into the counter sewer syst-, county sewer system there. So what they did was they backed it up under the freeway. His lateral, as we're talking about it right now, actually runs under the sidewalk, up past the freeway, it's going downhill uphill, which is a disaster. And it constantly plugs and stuff like that. And if that guy had to pay for that lateral, I'm telling you, you're talking $50,000, $60,000. I mean, it goes long ways. You guys need to probably, and it smelled this last weekend bad. And you guys probably need on that one to take a close look at what you want to do with that, because they've built that, whoever let, whoever allowed that to happen that way, it was a disaster. But it plugs up constantly. It's something that should be honed out regularly. And if he had to hook it up, I think it'd almost be cheaper for us to dig up the center of Garden Grove Boulevard and tie him into the county. Certainly get rid of the smell.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Need, when we're ready, need to read the title.
Okay.
That's ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Garden Grove Sanitary District adding sections 6.20.015 and 6.20.025 pertaining to inspection and replacement of private sewer facilities following a sewage overflow to chapter 6.2 of Title VI of the Garden Grove Sanitary District Code of Regulations.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion now. I'll move we approve. Have a motion? Lot of brave souls here tonight.
Second.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, make your comment.
You know, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is for Orange County, made a decision six or seven years ago now to have a zero tolerance of sanitation spills, so we're bound by that. We then got sued by Orange County Coast Keeper. I voted against the settlement. I thought that the conditions of the settlement were too harsh, and I didn't think we were in violation of the law. But a majority of the council voted to approve the settlement, and this comes out of that settlement. And so I don't feel obligated to vote for this just because of the settlement, but in listening to staff speaking about the CCTV in particular, closed-circuit television inspection, I think we've got technology from that that allow, actually allows us to make these repairs cheaper because we can target where in the laterals the repair has to be made, rather than having to dig up somebody's entire front yard. So I think this proposal exact, is actually an improvement over what we've done in the past, so I'll vote for this, but reluctantly.
Is that a second?
No, you already had a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Okay. Motion, second, call for-
I have a comment before I vote. I don't see any big difference between what we were doing before to try to resolve the situation and the proposal. So I'm, I'm like Councilman Mark Rosen, I'm a little bit reluctant about it, but then in hindsight, it's not really a big difference between the two, so I'll be voting for it.
Well, I'll just, I'll make the comment too then. I think kind of what pushed me over the edge was the fact that CCTV, I don't like the idea that the citizen has to pay for it. However, I, I think that's probably a requirement of Coast Keeper, but not who has to pay for it. But on the other hand, if it were my lateral, I, and I know in the past we've talked eight, nine, $10,000 for laterals. So you say $100 a foot or whatever, and that's quite an improvement, but I think that if you can, for $250 or so, have CCTV pinpoint the area that has to be cut out and replaced, you're saving a whole lot of money. Under the old way, I think, I've always kind of been one of the believers that the laterals, you know, who owns what? That from the property line in, it should be the residents, and the property line to the center of the road should be the cities. But there's diminishing support for that kind of an idea anyway, but I think the cost factor is, is what's swaying me tonight. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
4A. Mr. President, 4A is a request for payment to Midway City Sanitation District for some work that was done jointly, and I'd like Dave Insminger to give a brief staff report on this.
Mr. President, members of the board, Garden Grove Sanitary District entered into a shared sewer agreement with Midway City Sanitary District in April of 1997. It is common practice for sharing of sewers with our neighboring districts as well as participation in proportionate cost sharing when sewer lines need replacing. Midway City properly notified Garden Grove in advance per this shared sewer agreement, and Garden Grove has budgeted for this upcoming 15th Street Westminster Boulevard sewer project by Midway City. This project will replace 3,881 linear feet of capacity-deficient 8-inch sewer main with capacity-sufficient 12-inch sewer main. This project was publicly bid and had eight bidders. The contract was awarded to the lowest responsive bidder, Charles King Company, in the amount of $1,374,469.50. Garden Grove agreed to pay 55% of its share, set at $755,958.23. It is recommended that the board approve payment of an invoice in the amount of $755,958.23 to Midway Sanitary District. This concludes our staff report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff? Move we approve?
Second.
Motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. President, if I may, on the, on the one prior, I'd like to go back to one clarification on the sewer lateral ordinance, just to put on the record that the board waived the reading of the ordinance in full. So if you could take that action so that the record reflects that as well.
Do you want to vote on waiving the reading?
Yes.
I move we waive the reading.
I have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Thank you.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, any items or matters from board members? Okay, we're adjourned and we'll reconvene the city council meeting. Were there consent items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And it's recommended that items 4A through 4G be acted simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Move to balance.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Vote.
Mr. Broadwater? Motion received, five yes votes.
Why don't we take a break and sign these kids' certificates for them?
A little break?
I don't care.
Okay, we'll take a, a short five-minute break to, to sign the paperwork for these high school students. I'll borrow your camera. Yeah.[422.03]
Okay.
Let the mayor go first, okay.
You run the meeting.
Okay. Do we get a staff report?
Right, before the staff report, I think Councilmember Winn would like...
I have a concern about the Brookhurst-Bixby site as a potential dog park. I think it would be a good site for a skate park, but that is not the issue before us tonight. So therefore, I make a motion to remove the Brookhurst-Bixby site from this discussion for the potential dog park.
Well, would you mind if we had the staff report first?
Uh...
Yeah, I think you're jumping the gun. I might support that, but I'm not going to support it until I hear everything.
Okay.
That's fine.
Well, the reason why I did that, maybe if...
Go on.
Okay, maybe, just to be frank, maybe if that was out of the way, the mayor can come back and participate.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, let me ask a couple of questions about that site.
Okay.
You have the Garden Grove Park site, and then you have three sites which are on the PE right-of-way. And then you have various prices. Do those prices, as somebody said earlier, do those prices include the cost of removing...
Arsenic.
I didn't want to say arsenic, but removing material from the PE right-of-way?
It is arsenic.
No, it doesn't. However, Mr. Holman is here to... Oh, thank you. No, I'm sorry. It does not... But Mr. Holman's here just to relate to that subject and kind of give you a little bit of information on it.
Yes.
Okay.
The development itself, background levels, according to prior analysis we have, show that it's below levels to be concerned with. When you start grading operations and disturbing the soil at a depth, which I will have to read the report in order to let you know what that depth is, that is when you have the arsenic exposed and you need to be more concerned with proper disposal.
Are we able, right now, to plant grass on any of those three areas on the PE right-of-way?
If it would grow, the arsenic at the levels may prevent that, because that's what arsenic was initially used for in those areas, is for weed abatement.
Is that no?
Uh, grass may not grow there because it needs to be watered, it needs to be irrigated, of course. It's in the ground, so I don't know if anything would grow there. I'm not sure of that.
Well, I mean, maybe I'm stupid, but can you have a dog park without grass?
Yes, you can.
On all three of those sites, we would be proposing either mulch or bark. We would not be proposing any grass on the right-of-way. And there are a lot of dog parks that are just made of bark or mulch, no grass.
Okay. Do you want to renew your motion? Councilwoman Winn?
I want to make a motion to remove the Brookhurst-Bixby...
Make a motion to remove the Brookhurst-Bixby site from this discussion.
Is there a second?
I'd like to make a comment before you make the motion. Who made a used truck? Lot out of that property we're talking about here.
Yeah.
It was an entrepreneurial opportunity that the staff took advantage of.
Well, do you realize that they're running those big trucks right up on Brookhurst Street with four sale signs on them?
No, we haven't noticed that.
Well, somebody ought to realize that. It is making the neighborhood I live in look like... Anyway, we got it...
Is there sales tax on that?
I don't know if there's sales tax on it or not. I know one thing, it looks terrible.
All right, we'll notify the operator.
All right, is there a second to Councilwoman Winn's motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Okay, please vote.
Motion received, four yes votes, with Mayor Dalton being absent.
Well, you showed him voting and me not voting before. Let's try the buttons again.
I don't know. I guess Councilmember Broadwater? I'll ask.
See?
Use your right hand, not your left.
Well, first of all, Mr. Dalton should be in the middle and Mr. Rosen should be at the top, so why don't you change the signs?
The names are backwards, yes.
Okay.
I'm going to go back and redo all the votes.
I don't think... See, they voted in collusion all night long, so it hasn't been a problem.
You know what? On a better day, you would have caught that earlier. We got it passed here for three hours.
It was a test, is what you said.
Now, would you like a staff report?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay. At the December 11th city council meeting, the council directed staff to look at some additional locations for the dog park in addition to Garden Grove Park. So that's what we have, is some areas on the right-of-way. We'll skip over the Bixby-Brookhurst and present the others. We identified three right-of-way locations, Paloma and Euclid, and the Nutwood and Stanford we'll discuss tonight, as well as Garden Grove Park. The general issues on the right-of-ways is that it's open land, it's available, it would be an expansion of parkland. However, there are no restrooms available readily. There's no existing public utilities, like electricity and water. We would have to bring those in. There is no lighting at this point, and there's limited landscaping. There are some trees on some of the right-of-way, but not a lot. And there's a... The option for ground covered would be either mulch or bark. Grass is... Turf is not really recommended at this point. Here are the locations, just generally, they're very open pieces of land, there's some work... The Nutwood and Stanford is being used for, I believe that's a 22 expansion of storage, but they are all fairly barren at this point. The Paloma and Euclid site would provide for about 16,000 square foot facility at an approximate cost of about $149,000. As you can see, it's right up on the... Goes right up to the street, Paloma, right there. It is adjacent to residential homes and a church. That's one of the concerns. There would also be parking required, because there's only on-street parking, and we would propose just a small head-in parking lot, maybe 10 cars. It wouldn't be very big, but it would be enough to serve that.
On the PE right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
Bixby-Brookhurst, we will skip through. Nutwood and Stanford is the other area, it's right behind the post office. Again, a 16,000 square foot facility, approximately $178,500. It is adjacent on one side to some apartment buildings, residential, and again, parking would be required, because it is right up on the street. And then Garden Grove Park, as we had presented earlier, it would be smaller, about half the size of the other, to a little more than half the size, but the cost would be less, approximately $73,900. Some of the advantages of Garden Grove Park, as we've mentioned before, that restrooms are available at the back of the Recreation, Sports and Recreation Center, parking's already available, there's already utility services there that would be able to be accessed, there's security lighting, because there's park lighting already, there's landscaping, including shade trees right in this area, and it has limited proximity to other residences, so the noise and other factors wouldn't be as big an issue. And staff would... Because of the amenities, staff believes that Garden Grove Park would be the, first, the easiest to get up and running, the most available in terms of services, and the less expensive. But the other two are proposed, are possibilities as well. So this concludes our report. If you have any questions?
Mr. Rosen.
This park is being funded by a grant from Supervisor Janet Winn?
Yes. We've talked to Supervisor Winn's office, and they would need to take it back to the supervisors, but that is where the funding would be coming from, yes.
If I can inquire, is Mr. Harper here, representing Janet Winn on this matter?
I'm just here observing discussion.
Okay. Is there a deadline on this?
Their next board meeting is actually next Tuesday, so tonight's decision is important for them to take it to that point. And we've just been told from their office that if they don't decide by the next meeting, it's probably off the table.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment. I know I heard you say some of the things I had some concerns about, too. I know that location has the security, it has lighting, it has utilities already there, so it's the easiest one to convert to a dog park. Plus the fact, my understanding is, dog lovers sometimes are out at 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning, you know, to these locations with their dogs, and certainly, security is a concern, lighting, ability to clean up after their pets, and parking, and not disturbing adjacent residential areas. And I think, to be honest with you, to me, this fits the bill with all those things. And I am a little concerned that if we aren't able to get it now, we're probably going to lose it. And there's an awful lot... In fact, there were a couple of articles, one of them I meant to bring. Apparently, there are a lot of greyhound rehabilitation for the dogs in this area. And I can believe it, because there's about eight greyhounds that I see people bring to Brookhurst School every day, in the evening and on weekends. And so they need the areas for their dogs to run. These people are very responsible, they carry little plastic bags and clean up after them. But I think, I think the Garden Grove Park location is the best one of all of them.
I like the idea of expansion of a park. I think that we have, we probably have less parks than most cities our size anywhere around. I really like the idea of expansion. I like the idea that, that on the track, the railroad track, the old PE right-of-way is larger than Garden Grove Park facility. So I would, I mean, I'd like to take advantage of all the money we can get and expand our park facilities. I'm going to vote for the dog park one way or the other, but I certainly prefer to have it expanded.
Ms. Winn?
In the last meeting, I mentioned that I would like to expand parks, rather than build a park on top of a park. After looking at the costs, the difference between the Garden Grove Park and Paloma and Euclid is about $76,000. Supervisor Janet Winn has allocated about up to $200,000 for the dog park. And the Paloma and Euclid location I like, because it's cheaper than the right-of-way on Nutwood and Stanford, and also because it's on a major street, which is Euclid. And I think it would, to make that into a dog park, would give the Garden Grove an aesthetic appearance that is nicer than that empty lot right now. And like Mr. Broadwater said, 16,000 square foot, 16,000 square foot facility is a lot bigger than 9,000 something, and for dogs, it does really make a difference, that they have the room to roam about. If we were to put lightings and restroom in this, then we would have to put an additional $25,000 for Paloma and Euclid. And we never expected the supervisor to come up with a proposal for the $200,000. That's kind of like a blessing for us. So for us to put out an additional $25,000 to get an additional park and make residents who have dogs as pets happy, I think it's worth it, and I would go for the Paloma and Euclid location.
Well, I think that all the other factors that we talked about, safety factors, I'm not sure if you have an estimate that says you can put water and lighting and all those things in for $25,000, and restrooms for $25,000.
We had estimated that we would be able to actually drop like a prefab restroom, plus the connections, for about $75,000. But it doesn't include lighting, but it would include water, like a water faucet or spigot for the dogs.
And where would the parking be, on city streets, or...?
Well, it would actually be, I think in the staff report, it has a picture there, but the parking would actually be on the right-of-way. So we would pave that portion that's right against the street to allow maybe eight to 10 cars to park head in there.
And that's taking into consideration any dealing with arsenic and that type of thing?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the dog park for Garden Grove Park.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to discuss it further. I think of the four, or the three, this is the best location for all the reasons outlined by staff. These others are not natural parks, and I think would get less use, and I think they'd be of a lesser quality than the dog park at Garden Grove Park. And I know we have to make a decision tonight, so we're really limited to these options. I would just say that there are other locations in the city. We could have picked, we have compiled a lot of land in the civic center area, just to the east of where we are right now, and we're land banking that for future undefined uses. That could have been used for parkland without the problems in the soil that the PE right-of-way has. The city owns other lots throughout the city that could have been used for parkland. And this council puts a mind to it and actually sets parks as a priority, could use that land for parks. So far, we haven't done that. We've chosen to land bank for redevelopment or for other things other than parks, and have really put parks at a lower priority. That's a council decision. A council can declare the priorities. Staff doesn't do that, we do that. And so I'm going to support the motion, but I think in the near future, we should be looking at some of the land that we own to make new parks. The mayor made a proposal in closed session for a park in a certain area that's under litigation. I thought that was an excellent proposal. But I mean, it's, the council has to decide, do you want parks as a priority or not? And then we instruct staff what to do on that.
Mr. Broadwater? I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to move that we put the dog park at Paloma and Euclid.
I'll second that motion.
Mine, too, but...
Is it out of order? May I, a point of parliamentary procedure?
Yes.
I think a substitute motion, which completely is the opposite of the main motion, is out of order. And I'd like a ruling on that. It seems to me you can make a motion to amend, but you can't make a counter motion while a motion is pending.
My understanding of a substitute motion would be that it can, in fact, supplant the original motion. And perhaps, that would be my recommendation, so that the substitute motion be heard first. I would also suggest, because this issue has come up a couple times recently, that perhaps we provide some further definition in the council guidance manual to address this particular issue, so that the council as a whole can feel comfortable about that process. But for this evening, it would be my recommendation that the substitute motion does take precedence over the original motion.
Okay, I can tell you that at meetings I preside at, at OCTA, I rule substitute motions out of order when they're completely the opposite of the main motion, and your colleague, Mr. Smart, always upholds me when I do that.
He's very wise to uphold you.
Well, can I, would it be in order?
In fact, in fact, in ruling on these issues, the mayor controls the decisions subject to the council itself. So if the council itself wants to supersede that, they can.
I would think Mr. Jones would love substitute motions.
What would stop me from bringing a substitute motion to his substitute motion, which reinstates the mayor?
There is only, under the procedures, as I understand him, there would be only one substitute motion allowed on a matter.
Well, you guys really hate to lose.
No, it's not that, it's just, anyway.
Yeah. Okay, so we're voting on a substitute motion, which is...
Paloma and Euclid.
Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, two yes votes, with Councilmember Rosen, Mayor Dalton, and Councilmember Jones voting no.
Now, let me ask you a question. We've had a substitute motion, which these people don't seem to like. I sort of love them. Can I make another substitute motion now that it's been dealt with?
No, we're back to the main motion now.
Okay.
Okay, my motion is for Garden Grove Park. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay. Okay, we have a closed session item.
Wait, 9A.
We still have 9A.
Okay, 9A is a direction regarding solicitation of applications for the Housing Authority Commissioners. This time, I'd like to add for traffic commissioners, too. Anyone interested in applying for the position, the appointment of traffic commissioner, contact the city. There's forms available on computer, or you can have one mailed to you, or stop by and pick one up. And we talked earlier about the housing authority.
Right, so you extend the same invitation to... Now, it's a little bit different, because you have to be qualified tenant and a participant in the program to be a commissioner. So that's the only qualification in terms of soliciting interested parties to be...
So are we going to nominate the...
Not tonight. You're just going to announce that the position's available.
We're opening it up to anyone who fits the requirements, okay.
Right.
Being a Section 8 recipient.
Correct.
Okay. And the same as I mentioned for the other form, you can get that, City Hall, on a computer. They can mail one to you, or you can go by. Okay, now we have a closed session.
And you want to do matters?
I'm sorry, yeah, well, we'll do that. Go ahead, Bruce.
Where are we?
Matters.
Matters.
Excellent, excellent. First of all, I agree with the gentleman that said Mr. Rosen's a flip-flop. Second, I certainly disagree with the gentleman, and I didn't really catch his name, Pip or Dip or something like that.
Dibs.
Dibs. Mr. Dibs, who said that in 1993, we took in $4 million in property taxes, and 10 years later, 15 years later, we took in $6 million. And it was because of redevelopment that that happened. The truth of the matter is, redevelopment, this city would be a completely different city without redevelopment. And from the standpoint, we'd probably be in bankruptcy. And we took in somewhere between $12 and $13 million out of redevelopment funds last year that went right into the general fund. And that's because we used redevelopment. Redevelopment is a tool for urban renewal that is probably the best tool that has ever come along to do it, because it pays its own way as it goes. And for somebody to come in here with some comic book written by Mr. Chris Norby, and Chris is a good guy, I have nothing wrong with the man, but the truth of the matter is, his book stinks. And if anybody read it, it's full of innuendos, it's full of cold-blooded lies, and it's full of misstatements. And I wish that gentleman would have stuck around for me to have my say on it, because without a doubt, you'd have to be a buffoon to read that book and believe it. And so I just really think that, that this city, we wouldn't, our police department would be the sheriff if we didn't have redevelopment. Our fire department would probably be the county. I mean, there would be major things. The thing that came along in this city that changed our financial situation was redevelopment. We got rid of the slums on Harbor Boulevard, where Yucky and Sage, it used to be nothing but drugs and prostitution in there. And redevelopment cleaned all that up. And anybody that thinks redevelopment, I mean, certainly, I'm sure it can be misused. It certainly hasn't been misused in this city. It's been a great tool. And I just, for somebody to come up and say, "All redevelopment is bad," I have no time for that person whatsoever. And that book, you ought to read it. I agree. Anybody want to take a look at that book? At least you have better laughs at a Walt Disney comic book, you know, because it is a comic book. The characters that they draw in it, all the businessmen in it looked like cigar-smoking ripoff people. And it's all in the book. I mean, I've read it, and wasted my time. But anyway, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit. And I think Mr. Rosen was right with AARP last week. I do believe, I wish that Mr., is it Vil, De Vil? Vil, yes. De Vil is the bad guy in Walt Disney movies, Bad Girl. Yes. Cruella, is that her name?
Cruella De Vil.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that. Named after a Cadillac. Anyway, I don't think he is a citizen of the city of Garden Grove, but I do wish he was, so he could run for city council and get up here and do it his own way. He comes up here and speaks at the time. He wants to debate, Mr. Rosen, he does not have the right to do that. He has the right to come in and make all the comments he wants to in oral communications. The debate, he has to stand for council if he wants to debate him, and he needs to do that. Anyway, Mary Ann Hill, I hear she passed away. She was president of the...
Strawberry Festival.
Strawberry Festival. She was highly involved in that. And I hope we can close in her name. I know you're going to mention Councilman Luttrell, and so I'd like to add her to your list.
It's Mary Lou, isn't it? I think it's Mary Lou Hill.
I think you're right. I think you're right. I think I misspoke.
Yes. Mr. Rosen?
Well, a few things. Matt Fratell and Mayor Dalton and I took a tour of the PE right-of-way last Friday and saw some of the transportation opportunities on the PE right-of-way, some of the other development opportunities on the right-of-way. And walking on the PE right-of-way, just, I mean, that's part of the reason why I voted against putting a dog park on the PE right-of-way. I don't think the soil is appropriate for that. You know, I propose that we expand some of our parks into the right-of-way, and we did that at Kotaske Park, but it's not like it's an expansion, because the park is grass, and then you look at the expansion, and it's a combination of concrete and other stuff, and you have picnic tables, but they're on concrete, and it's just not the same environment. And I think it wouldn't be the same as a real dog park to have it on the right-of-way. And so that's why I supported the proposal to put it at Garden Grove Park. Also, last Friday, I attended a dinner for the TET parade. The TET parade is, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, but the TET parade is coming back after four years, and Councilwoman Dina Winn is in charge of it, I think, or she was, anyway. She was in charge of the fundraising dinner last night, and I must say, that was a wonderful event, and you certainly have a career as a master or mistress of ceremonies, if you ever decide to give up the practice of law. But Dina was wonderful. She was dancing and introducing groups. I don't think you sang while I was there, but you did? Okay. Very, yeah, you did, that's right. Very multi-talented, and I want to salute you for an excellent evening. And when's the TET parade? Same weekend as the TET Festival, right? February 9th? Okay. And then I want to make a couple of comments about Ray Luttrell, our former councilman. Ray served for eight years on the city council and had a definite point of view. And then after he left the council, he continued to come to council meetings and speak on issues of importance to him, and point out the council's mistakes and where he disagreed with us. And I think that's healthy for any city council, to have people who come and criticize our policies and point out our shortcomings, and, because I think that keeps us on our toes, you know? And Ray did that as long as he could. He didn't leave city politics after he left office, and that's always useful. I think many of the people who come to our council meetings do us a great service by coming here and bringing up issues. And, you know, I get in, I got into it with David Vil, but he comes time after time, and he pushes his issue, and that's all to the good, because that keeps us focused on those issues, too. And Ray did his homework. Didn't always agree with him, and I frequently would challenge his conclusions, but he came armed with statutes and statistics, and that's, and he gave an empirical approach, which I think is to the benefit of everybody, and I think the city will miss him and his contribution to the city.
Thank you. Ms. Winn?
First, I want to extend my condolences to Ray Luttrell's family, and Mr. Rosen couldn't have said it, I couldn't have said it better than Mr. Rosen. He was a great man. He cared for his community. He served as the city council. He served as a city councilman. And after that, he continues to have concerns about the city, and came to the council very frequently to speak up regarding his concerns. Again, my, I'm sorry, and my condolences to Ray's family. Second, I want to remind everyone out there, since we're not gonna have a meeting before the TET parade and the TET Festival. The TET Festival will be held in our city, the great city of Garden Grove, on February 8th, February 9th, and February 10th, at Garden Grove Park. And the TET parade will be held one day only, that is February 9th, on Saturday. And it's going to be from 10:00 to 12:00 PM in the city of Westminster on Folsa Avenue, between Bouchard and Magnolia. I hope everyone will be able to come. It's a fun event. A lot of organizations will participate in that. And as, for the TET Festival, I've gone to that for many years. And every year, I see new additions, especially of different groups in our city, joining in the TET parade. And I'm really proud of the students for making it a great event. So I invite everyone to come and join us in the fun.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just condolences to the survivors of Ray Latrell. And then also, just to draw attention to one event I went since our, went to since our last meeting. That was a, put on by Habitat for Humanity, which is a nonprofit group that actually builds affordable housing for low-income people to actually buy and own and live in. And they, they do so with, with volunteers that actually go out and build the homes. As a follow-up, I actually went out to a, a site just to go see what it looked like. And it's actually, looks kind of fun, looked pretty cool that they get the, you know, they have some people obviously running different trades that know what they're doing, but they take volunteers in to do a lot of the, a lot of the legwork. So a lot of the construction activities that take place these days using heavy machinery are done by hand, of course, because they have free labor that goes into building these houses. So it's sort of a different way of, of doing it. And our own Crystal Cathedral actually participates, I think, very actively with them. So in, in terms of, you know, pooling people together to go actually help build some of these sites. So if you have any interest in going out and learning how to build a house and getting involved, I guess, contact our Crystal Cathedral and see how you could jump in on one of these projects.
Thank you. I thank you, Mr. Broadwater, for letting us know about Mary Lou Hill. Certainly, we will adjourn the meeting in her name. And I knew her because before I was on the council, I was a police officer and used to work the Strawberry Festival every year. And she was there, and, and, you know, from the time it started till the time it ended. Just unbelievable ball of fire, she was always going, and she was a wonderful woman. And we're sorry to hear about that. And we sent our condolences to her family. Another person that I want to adjourn the meeting in honor of is Jesse Daniel. Jesse was an employee of the city for about 20 years. She worked in the finance department, sanitation. She worked for Garden Grove Sanitary before the city took it over. She died over the Christmas holidays. And again, our condolences to her family. And in memory of her, tomorrow at 11 o'clock in the morning, there's going to be a tree planting at the Civic Center Park across from City Hall. There was another gentleman that passed away suddenly, Steve Anderson, who was a La Habra City Council member. He was on the Orange County Sanitation Board, and he, he was everywhere. Steve was, was a hard-working man. He was 55 years old, had a massive heart attack. He survived by his wife, Josie, and children, Chris and Erica. He has two sons that are police officers in Placentia. We'll also adjourn the meeting in his memory. And of course, Ray Latrell. Ray's, the services will be tomorrow at Westminster Memorial Park, 14801 Beach Boulevard, at 2:30 PM. Just, I, I don't think anyone could have said it better than Mayor Pro Tem Rosen did. Ray, his heart was in the right place. When he came in here, he fought for what he believed in. And he wouldn't take no for an answer if he believed it was, the answer should have been a yes. I always liked Ray. You know, it didn't bother me, because when he would come in and question something, frequently, he was right. Frequently, he brought up another opinion or another side to look at things. But everything he did, he did for the betterment of the city. He didn't do it for Ray Latrell. He did it because he thought it was the right thing to do. And that's the kind of person that he was. So we also will adjourn the meeting in his honor, and our condolences go to his family. And now we're recessing to a closed session.